Will stand for prayer. Father, I would like to thank you for this meeting today. We're so thankful that you allow us to make here say that you allow us to make decisions as in the best interest of all of Harrison County. In his name I pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a resolution congratulating First Baptist Church of Biloxi for its 150th anniversary.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Henry is going to hold the fact of the court's order.
I want to recognize Brian Henry to discuss his claim regarding damage to his vehicle's windshield while parked at the Biloxi Justice Court. Brian? Going once, going twice, now Brian.
So you're going to deny that claim? There's no evidence he presented that the county can.
Okay. I have a motion to deny.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Trey McKnight to discuss Coffee Creek Outfall Improvement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
DMOR recently completed some improvements in Coffee Creek Outfall just west of Centennial Plaza. I've had a lot of people ask with the county owning the structure now, how will it be administered? As far as will we be renting it out similar to the Long Beach Pavilion? Or is it just open to the public? It's a really nice, it's got a nice pavilion on the end of it, kind of overlooks the water there. It's big enough that you could probably use it as somewhat of an event space, but the question would be is if we're going to tie an actual permit and make it a rentable space? And if we are, would we be adding some kind of gates or a way to seal it off from general public when it's not being utilized?
Where's this at?
It's at the Coffee Creek, it's just west of Centennial Plaza. There was an open outfall structure there that came over and capped and then built a pavilion out at the end of it. It's a DMOR project. They turned it up.
I feel like it's paid by taxpayers and anyone should be able to use it.
I agree. Yeah, first come, first served. That's the one they just completed, right?
Yes.
The board probably needs to consider that's what happens if two groups show up and want to use it, you'll start having that problem. It's all Matt. I can tell you that if they both show up. If they show up at the same time having an event or party, you'll have some conflict.
We can put a rule board up like we do other places, first come, first served, please share, don't leave glass, don't leave this.
Sure.
You just wait and see if it starts to be a problem anyway.
Do we need to make any kind of motion?
No. It's under the regulations of the Sand Beach.
All right, so I'll put some warrant signs up and just with the understanding it's first come, first served. Anyone wants to have wedding ceremonies or anything like that, you know, it's good to give.
Trey, the only thing is the warranty for that roof was the name of the Bureau Marine Resources to judge that change.
I need to call it DMOR and have that switched over.
Either give them assignment from the county to let you know.
Yes.
One more thing, Trey, before you do, you can get with the road department to get those signs printed.
Yes, ma'am.
Get with legal if you don't mind on the rules. Don't you agree, no alcohol, no glass?
Sure. And we've got some warrant signs that we have out on the beach.
It's probably the same word.
Well, not in West, containers, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett Brown with Paycheck, Paychex to discuss options for payroll services and an update to the HR handbook.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Appreciate your time. My name's Garrett Brown, I work for a company called Paychex. I live at 3502 Mockingbird Lane in Rogers, Arkansas. And had some, some great conversations with many of your leaders internally to, to the county. And through some of those conversations, I believe there is opportunity for us to help, not only strategically around some of the infrastructure from a technology perspective, but also from a compliance and regulatory handbook update, giving job descriptions and just giving a resource externally from, from the county. I know you've obviously got legal, that's a very important tool, but sometimes it's nice to have someone especially that works specifically around employment, around employee relations and, and those needs. And so through some of those conversations, I've brought a few things that I can leave behind for y'all to look over afterwards. But through my conversations with Administrator Collins, we've seen some areas I believe that we can support and get y'all up to date, protect the county as a whole from potential employment litigation. And also just create a much more systematic relationship with the employees so that they understand areas that are expectations for them, so that there's compliance across the entire county, things like that. So you have to answer any questions that I potentially do.
In the handbook, that would be updating job descriptions as, as of where we're at today.
Yes, sir. We, we would work to update job descriptions when we look at even job postings, making sure that those are meeting all the requirements, whether that may be ADA, whether that could be.
So those job descriptions will be based on what we have here, it's not going to be copy and paste from somewhere.
Everything is specific to you. So our, our model is you get a SHRM certified HR business partner from, from Paychex. They work with your team, specific to your needs. At the end of the day, the county gets to make their own decisions, right? So we're not coming in and telling you what to do, but we are working with you to find resolution and to create some updates through some of your policies and procedures. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, how does the payroll services work?
So there, there's twofold. So the, the HR support we're talking about is external to the payroll side right now. Y'all have got a couple of vendors that you utilize to help collect time, to collect the HRIS, which is a system that houses a lot of your employee relations documents. And then you use another system that actually functions as getting everybody paid. So the, kind of the first conversations we've had is around updating the handbook, the employee relations, the job descriptions like I was talking about. And then potentially looking at down the line, being able to create a full relationship from the technology side that helps get everybody paid. And, and we handle a lot of the pieces like your quarterlies, your year ends, taxes, those pieces as well. But in a, a cloud-based platform that gives everybody the, the access across the county without needing your resources internally from IT servers, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And you have this contact information.
I do. So this goes back to Troy days, you know, there's, not everybody is completely happy with our payroll system, it does have glitches. Tim, Trish and I, we looked at and priced out, our handbook has not been touched since 2017 and it is very outdated. A lot has changed since then. We initially reached out to a labor lawyer and it was extremely expensive to do that. I think when I first met with Paychex, they, they brought in the HR option and, and it is a lot more affordable than customizing or getting a labor lawyer to update our handbook.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm interested, Robbie, and I appreciate it.
Would you like me to leave anything?
Yes, ma'am. Please, please leave us some information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
All right, we want to recognize Colin Carrano, the Harrison County Development Commission. Hello, Colin, how are you doing?
Thank you all for scaring Colin because she was like, I don't know how to do that.
You scared her pretty good.
Thank you all, we just wanted to give kind of a mid-year update, there's a lot going on in our department and a lot to be excited about. So we've got over a billion dollars worth of projects right now, largely related to PCC and some ancillaries that are coming around them. We've done projected annual tax revenue on these projects of over 2.8 million, an annual payroll of 84 million. I was just in a meeting last week with a bunch of other economic development.
Just one question, reference to taxes, are those tax anticipations based on the exemptions?
Yes, sir.
That grant?
Yep. And they were double-checked by Robert, so, and that's actually a low number. We didn't use the high number, we did, did an average of what we, that's, that's a low number, yeah.
Thank you.
And in this economic development meeting, everybody was talking about diversification and I don't know how you could get much more diversified than what we, we've got chemical, we've got retail, we've got metal manufacturing, we've got maritime, and we've got new business and existing business that are, that are, you know, those are the folks that we'd really like to take care of because they've been here for a long time. For example, Semen Composites is going to get, for the first time in their 30 years of asking for money from the Navy, they're getting funded by the Navy for their projects. So they, they anticipate a very busy construction schedule in the next year. Next slide. So we, we're going to go slide by slide real quick. So this is a company from Pensacola that's moving in, they closed at the end of the month, they're actually on the agenda today for a contract modification, but they're going to go on Glasscock. They build roofing materials and they sell to the big providers like Beacon Roofing and some of the others. They don't compete with Golden, I already made sure of that, so I didn't want to make Jason mad. Next slide. PCC, as you all well know, that 540 is now over 700 and the 460 represents the jobs both at Chemours and, and with PCC.
That's that phase that closed after Katrina, or that, that, that Chemours, the portion that closed after Katrina that never reopened?
Well, they, they've reopened Line Two, but by, by bringing this on site, they're, they're hoping Chemours is going to add over 290 jobs.
They're making the chlorine on site.
And, and highlighted on here, you know, a lot of the projects we do, the only way we generate revenue is if it's on land we own. So we've, we've got a lot of money invested in PCC, but we don't generate any revenue off of it because it's not on our properties. Next slide. Buc-E's, everybody wants to talk about Buc-E's, June 9th, 10 o'clock, in case y'all hadn't been under a rock and hadn't seen that. Again, it was supposed to be 60 million in investment, it ended up being over 80, no abatements. The only, the only incentive was the interchange that y'all provided, so thank y'all for that. The neighbors are very happy with the new bridge.
Excuse me?
Yep.
June 9th is our Board of Supervisor meeting at 9:30.
We can recess and come back.
Oh, okay.
I didn't pick, I didn't pick, they picked it.
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know.
We can recess and come back.
Just come here after? We need to do it today.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So again, lots of jobs, zero revenue for us. Next, next slide. Next Terra Energy, this is on the, we did an, y'all helped with an abatement, I was with that group. They've already invested over $100,000 in concrete, that project will be finished by the end of the year. Not a lot of jobs, big investment. Because of the one that we did, there are now four more projects like this being.
Where's that at?
It's on the Pine Grove.
Waste management.
It's converting methane into. Next. This is a project, we're actually going to DC tomorrow to lobby our congressional delegation. There's a DOD component in here for magnesium, this is a company from Canada coming to co-locate because of PCC. And 87% of the magnesium made in the, in the world is coming from China, so we'd rather have it made here, we'd rather have it be made in Harrison County. So ship comes into the court with raw materials, a lot of the similarities with PCC. And again, if not for Chemours, we wouldn't have PCC, if not for PCC, we wouldn't have Maple.
Is there a plant location, anticipated plant location?
Potentially. We're still working on the same location. Next. This is happening with the, was the dock, everybody had to move their boats out. So this is a $65 million investment, 43 jobs. I think John Dane's pretty happy because he closed and he's buying another building as a result of selling this building, so that's kind of re, re-circulating the money in the neighborhood. No, no real abatements or incentives. One thing that in, in all these projects, Randy's worked really hard with MDA, we've added another $28 million in value incentives through MDA for all these projects combined so far. And some of them are still getting their incentive packages negotiated. Next. Existing, so we've got Keith Huber doing 6 million and for Jamie Holder to invest $6 million is like anybody else investing $600 million, if you know Jamie, because he probably still has his kindergarten lunch money. But those are 84 high-paying jobs. Really, you know, they pay over $68,000 a year, they work 24/7. Great company, glad they're doing it here and not in Bay Springs or some of their other locations. Bernhard found out this morning, they changed their name, they're doing an $8 million investment. We have a company flying in on Wednesday that's going to meet with them on Thursday, they may do a co-location for a technology kind of transfer company. I don't really understand it yet, but I guess I'll learn more on Thursday. Then no, no incentives or abatements. This is, US Marine has now purchased Harson Kennedy, the building was on, on the market for probably three days and John gobbled it up. So they're going to do their expansion in the Harson Kennedy Building. Harson Kennedy was consolidated with Formica, Formica moved everything back to Indiana and was closing this plant. So that's, even though we lost one, we gained another. So again, they're going to add at least 30 jobs with US Marine.
Is this adjacent bill to the USMI already?
That's right, it's, it's like right there.
Yeah, there's like two buildings, there's two buildings in between, there's like the old Foundry.
And the scrapyard, right?
There's, there's like the Salome, the Salome offices, the old Foundry, and then US Marine.
Okay, gotcha.
But we sold them a strip in the back, so they've got a driveway access to the old rail bed to connect the two buildings. Next slide. Semen Composites, they're going to build a new building, they've added on to this building, they're building a new building here, they bought 10 acres across the street, they're building two buildings over there. I can't talk about it, it's really cool stuff that I wish I could talk about. It's like, it's the only place in the world you can get a spare tire for a nuclear submarine, so it's pretty cool. And then they're adding on to their services they provide. We've got a lot of, we've got six or seven projects on the horizon for rail with PCC and Maple and some of the others. We're looking at a tenfold increase in rail traffic in the, in the neighborhood, so we're trying to bring in a bigger provider that'll do better door-to-door service than CPKC currently is. And CPKC is, is open to that conversation. And then we have some, we've got, the, the only things that hit this list are things that are committed. So we still have probably another half dozen or dozen projects that are out in, in the atmosphere that we're working on, so. Thank y'all for your support and busy times.
Can you email us that slide?
Yes. And you got a hard copy of it.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to go ahead and cover 57 through 60 while we have Harrison County Development here. 57, order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately six acres of real property.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Consolar.
I was going to ask, who are they located?
No discussion, all in favor? 38. Order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the assignment and assumption of the real estate purchase offer entered into by and between Metal Properties LLC and Metal Properties Mississippi LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the conveyance of a non-exclusive easement to Pass Business Terminal LLC in accordance with the easement agreement for ingress and egress.
Motion.
Second, discussion, that's in pass or jam?
That's a, we're letting them use our old rail bed to access the water for a $6 million boat storage facility. Going at gun, is it gun, gun ho or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion, all in favor? Number 60, order concurring with and approving the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately a half acre of real property as more particular described as Exhibit A to STS Properties LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Location.
Shaw Matthews, Matthews dredging south in front of this facility. All right, any other discussion, all in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I know Wendy wanted to stay here all day. Tell me because he showed up, you moved him out.
Hey, Bill, tired of being a little extra reporter, if you're covering this, he can send you this digitally or you can have this. I know how hard it is to cover these things, so.
Thank you. All right, need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Number 17, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2023 Real Property Tax Rule. Discussion, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2024 Real Property Tax Rule.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving travel for Coroner Benjamin Switzer and Deputy Coroner Benjamin Benz and Michelle Carbine, Arthur DeBurger and Lauren Whitney Vales to attend Mississippi Coroner Medical Examiner Association Summer Conference to be held June 24th through 27th in Gulfport. Total fees are $1,750.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the final flat and related documents for Magnolia Walk Subdivision Phase Two, 42 lots, as recommended by Jackie Turner.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? 21, order authorizing the board president to execute and reimburse requests and all necessary documents from the Mississippi Department of Environmental Qualities MCWI Grant Program.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the board president to execute reimburse requests and all necessary documents from MDEQ, MCWI Grant Program for our program number two Canal Road Water Main.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Number 23, order authorizing and approving travel for Harrison County Fire Chief Pat Sullivan to attend the 2025 Fire Chief Summit, July 16th through 18th, Point Verde Beach, Florida, no cost incurred by the county.
Motion.
Second.
Only discussion, Pat, do you need a, a second to go along with you?
I'm sure you have a wine shirt to wear.
I don't know if you need to go down there by yourself.
I don't have any whole wine shirt, sorry.
Paul Trisher, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the memorandum of understanding between Mississippi Department of Health Bureau, Behavioral Health Services, and Harrison County Fire Rescue.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving that county patrolman be under the supervision and direction of the county road manager, further order that all county patrolmen shall continue to comply with all employee policies, procedures relating to recording police activity and firearms training and proficiency demonstration.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Order authorizing and approving the issuance of a beach event permit as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the creation of beach vendor site P2 west of Pascrees, Jam Hardwood.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Morning.
Zoning recommends concurrent with the planning commission's recommendations for cases 29 through 32.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Number 33, order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and has on file with payroll clerk, Human Resources Department.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? 34, order correcting Scrivener's error in date of employment.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order rejecting the only bid received for the lease purchase of two off-road four-wheel-drive utility tractors as bid was in excess of budgeted funding and authorizing advertisement for a rebid committed by Sand Beach Director.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Sheriff, favor?
Total inmate count is 800, we've got 167 state inmates, 75 of those are ready to go, 71 misdemeanors, 18 federal. We've got 16 juveniles at the adult detention center and 10 juvenile detention, all of those are Harrison County.
Order rescinding agenda item number 18 from the board meeting on March 24th, approving sole source purchase for metric solutions.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Number 38, order approving the sole source purchase for metric solutions of five new rocket bundles to include tablets and five reinstall kits to include wiring for new vehicles and to include support and storage for two years.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the board president to execute the memorandum of understanding between Goods and News Jail and Prison Ministry and the Harrison County Sheriff's Office for a term of one year beginning April 1st, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading upon minutes personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed on file with payroll clerk, Human Resources.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
I do have a quick question, how are we doing? I love seeing new hires, how are our numbers looking?
We're doing well. We're doing well.
Has the raise?
The raise helped?
Yeah, the raise has helped tremendously and we're steadily getting applications in, so it's, it's, it's been a big change for everybody.
Is this, is a lot of it new hires or is it people that are transferring from other?
Well, it's actually both. You know, there, a lot of people wanted to come to the sheriff's office, but they just couldn't take that big pay yet, so we, we've received a, a lot of outside people.
Good.
Other agencies aren't happy about it, but.
I know.
It's cyclical, so somebody else will go up and everybody minds it. All right, any other discussion, all in favor? Order approving the low quote purchase from American Integration Contractors in the amount of $45,774.16 for a license plate reader, custom surveillance trailer.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing.
Thank y'all for that, by the way, that was from the.
That was from Oakwood, yeah. Order authorizing and approving the replenishment of the training petty cash fund in the name of Brandon Hendry with an amount of $3,450.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving travel for constables James Morgan, Angel Middleton, Sammy Taylor, Alan Wethburn to attend the 2025 Mississippi Constables Association Conference in Gulfport, Mississippi, June 8th through 13th with total registration fees of $1,800, that's $450 each.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving.
If you don't mind, I was going to mention that at the end, but I might as well mention it now. Last year, we loaned them our bleachers from the fairgrounds because they take a statewide constable picture the morning of their meeting. And Angel asked me if we could do that again and Greg said they are available, so we were going to drop them off, I just wanted to make sure that was okay with y'all.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Do we need to do a motion on that?
Yeah, I would go ahead and get an order.
I'll make a motion and let them use our bleachers again.
Second. Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Order approving payment of claims listed payable from the tour account.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund account.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing reimbursement of $60.29 to the sheriff's clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Order setting forth proposed local system bridge replacement and rehabilitation project for period of January twenty-one, I'm sorry, January one, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five by adding the following state projects and authorizing board members to execute state aid orders.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Order approving the waiver fees for the use of the Success Community Center for Coast Bicycle Group to host their annual four-spoke ride event, August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Order authorizing an improvement budget amendment to reflect court reporter salary increase approved on the May fifth agenda.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
It doesn't go in, it's affected to July first.
Okay.
I think serious questions about it. That was a mess of a year.
All in favor? Order authorizing payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing approval and remediation of damages caused by flooding in the Chisora Clerk's office. Three courtrooms, the jury room, and adjacent hallways, all of which are declared to be emergency repairs, authorizing issuance of a contract to guarantee restoration upon receipt and pending legal review, and further authorizing the administrator to execute said contract on behalf of the county.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, about eighty, eighty-some thousand dollars. Is that what it is?
Yes.
But our insurance will cover that.
Insurance will cover that.
Great.
Just the final last meeting, we voted to go with insurance claim over self-pay.
He said that it wouldn't affect his.
Frank was there and solidified it would not count against us as a claim. Didn't affect our premiums.
All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the friends of the court to utilize the Harrison County Advocacy Center to conduct a special education boot camp, July twenty-eighth, from six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM, and July twenty-ninth, from nine-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM, coordination with and hosted by Mississippi Parent Training and Information Center.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Fifty-three, order authorizing and approving any supervisor, road manager, county administrator, chancery clerk, comptroller, and the board attorney to attend the Mississippi Association of Supervisors ninety-sixth Annual Conference, June ninth through the twelfth, Mississippi Coast Coliseum in Biloxi. Registration ranges from four ninety-five to six twenty-five per attendee.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the Harrison County Fire Rescue provide a fire truck and firefighter to MAS Conference inside the Coliseum for kid interaction, June tenth, June eleventh, and June eleventh.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing and approving Amendment Number Two to Agreement executed December fourth, twenty-three between Harrison County and the Focus Group for Certain Professional Services Related to Activities of Mississippi Sound Coalition, and authorizing the Board President to execute the same.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Order authorizing and approving the adjustment of all official court reporters' circuit court salary effective July first.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixty-one, order authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable and missed opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Um, I turned in one for the Women's Resource Center.
The baskets and babies?
Yeah.
It's a bitch.
Is that on there or not?
It's easy.
I got his glasses and I'm not in trouble saying anything.
You have some pictures.
So, I was willing to do twenty-five hundred for my Astro. Would any of y'all be willing? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't say that. Never mind. Okay, that's good.
What's the total?
I mean, I, we give small organizations five thousand or more.
I'm not, this isn't pulling up for me.
Oh.
What's the amount that we vote?
Twenty-five hundred, but I'd like to do more. That's fine.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Let's do, let's do, let's do five.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, because they don't get any federal state money because they give.
Yeah, because they, there was an email about that, yeah, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so five thousand on E, Jennifer.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I have a request that you have a vote separate on the last one.
Yes.
Okay, so, we can vote to amend D and.
No, it'd be E. So, let's just vote on A through D and then we'll vote on the separate.
So, I need a motion for A for.
A through D.
Okay, well, I need a motion for number sixty-one, and we're going to vote on A through B separately.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, okay, we have four yeses and one no. Number sixty-one, item E, I need a motion.
Motion for five thousand.
Five thousand?
Second.
All right. Do we need to amend that or just, we can just say five thousand?
I'll need to amend it.
Okay. Need a motion to amend from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then I need a motion to accept item E, sixty-one E, as amended.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And so, Jennifer, while we're thinking about it, do we have a mechanism that we reach out to all the people once they're approved to get their checks? That's you now. Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure. I know we talked about it, but I wasn't sure. That's what you do. Thank you.
All right. Sheriff, do you have anything?
I do. I just wanted to let the board know that we are losing Jennifer at the end of this month. She's done great for us, and I'm sure she'll do well for whatever life brings her in the future. I know. That being said, we have found her replacement, and she's being trained right now. Just like Jennifer, she's a schoolteacher by trade. But I'd like to ask the board to consider waiving the six-month insurance period so she doesn't lose her insurance. Chelsea Brisselair, I'm sorry, Chelsea.
Yeah, hello, Chelsea.
I thought you were a student.
I'll make that motion. Does that, we need a motion to waive the six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Administrator? No, I have none. All right.
The only thing I want to bring off the table is the Justin Wetzel topic that we had last meeting, and I think Tion has done some research on it.
Yes, item twenty-eight, and the last agenda was tabled in my request, so I could have time to look at it. I did, did research on it, found two AG's opinions, which I sent to Justin. Those are appropriate, the board can award those expenses to the.
So, you made a motion to put that back on the table?
Yes, I made a motion to bring it off the table. Okay.
Item number twenty-eight on the May fifth agenda.
Okay. Put that back on the table, and it's okay for us to approve that?
Yes.